Many unanswered questions. Path is Trojan horse. Would not use the trail, would use metro parks. Fix what is needed first. A lifelong resident didn't know Gates Mills Boulevard existed.
Thank you.
I didn't see a signature. If someone wants to look for it, they can, but I didn't.
I'd like to make a most, should you give her five more minutes?
Oh, so it's not on here. Ron Mucci is apparently who it's from.
So it's not signed?
You can come over here. You can come up to the podium.
Or then resend it, though it has his signature on it. It must have cut off. Well, if it's signed or not. It's still an email from a resident. They can. Mr. Leoni. Well, we'll have Mr. Leoni, just have Mr. Mucci resend it with his signature on the bottom. As long as it says exactly the same thing, I would assume.
Right.
Well, I did say to Council President that I did not see a signature on it. If you remember, I said that prior to my reading it.
Yeah, but then I asked Mr. Leoni, and he said he signed his name on the last page.
Yes, and there was no name.
We didn't know.
Feel free to look at it.
Okay, so before Mr. Ward gets, before you give your last comment, or I just want to ask Mr. Murphy something. If we do approve this trail, I want to know if AECOM will not put in any of the amenities. And I would like to introduce legislation that we put a 10-year moratorium on any amenities to not go into that Gates Mills Trail. So that would mean that every year, like we've put moratoriums on other things in the community, we would have to come before council and continue that moratorium for as long as we can do that for 10 years.
Don't we only do six months?
I think that would reassure a lot of people. There's a lot of problems that have come out this evening, a lot of issues, a lot of people are worried about certain things, so.
To answer your second question first.
Thank you.
Yes, you can put a moratorium on whatever you want. Amenities, you know, no benches, no trash cans, no parking, no anything.
All these things, right.
You could do that. Okay, that you can do. The other thing is, this resolution is not to build the trail. All it is, is to design the trail. And you can inform AECOM, we don't want any amenities. All we want is however wide the trail is for, you know, a distance, and that's it. And of course, there's drainage and, you know, there's different things.
Because they haven't even made the design yet. Like, that was what we're voting on tonight, was for them to make the design. So at that point, we let AECOM know that we just, we want nothing else but this trail.
Correct. They will design what council wants.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Ward.
So, just to go over some points. The legislation. So, obviously, this started, as the mayor mentioned, in January of 2016. Resolution number 2016-19 authorizing the mayor to approve for, and if awarded, conduct connectivity study. And that was unanimously passed. And then we followed that up in July of 2018 with an agreement with AECOM to conduct the connectivity study. Again, that was unanimously passed. In June of 2019, we approved the AECOM's connectivity study and the findings of the plan, and that was unanimously passed. And then, in January of 2020, Resolution 2020-8 authorized the mayor to take all steps necessary to apply for and accept the Clean Ohio Trails Grant. And it was passed unanimously. So, that's where we're at in terms of feedback we got from city council. Surveys, you know, we conducted four surveys. They all pointed strongly in favor of trails. The recap of the surveys, in 2019, we did the connectivity study survey. Eighty-six percent would be excited to have trails. Three percent would be disappointed or concerned. Later in the summer of 2019, we did a park and rec facility survey. There were eight hundred, I'm sorry, 968 responses, and the trails were the second-highest supported amenity behind upgrading playgrounds. And that came in at 68% in favor. The following year, in 2020, we did a parks and recreation follow-up facility survey, and 73% of residents thought that was important, that trails be connected to parks, schools, and shopping areas. And then finally, in 2021, late '21 and '22, we did a survey of Gates Mills Boulevard residents. Thirty-one residents are in favor and have sent emails. Actually, I'll correct that now, 30. Joe Dea has gone back the other way and is now opposed. So 30 residents are in favor, 18 residents are against, nine are unsure. For whatever reason, there's one gentleman who's deceased, a home that doesn't appear anyone lives at, gentleman's moving. And some people just don't feel comfortable making a commitment either way to what's, you know, the future of the Boulevard. So, you know, one of the things that we did when we did that survey in Gates Mills Boulevard, and I know that some of you, maybe I haven't talked to, I know that you're a negative, so I didn't need to talk to you because you're already a negative. And so, that's a vote, right? I mean, I talked to a positive, and for the positive, I said, follow it up with an email so that we know. It's not like it's Sean just saying that, but it's someone coming up and saying, this is what I want, and this is what I don't want. And what I found in doing that was that everyone does want a simple trail. And I'm human, I make mistakes. It was my idea to do a trail, a park thing, and obviously, it fell flat on its face. Nobody wants it. Nobody wanted it a year and a half ago. And everyone that's for trails, say, I want a trail, I want a simple trail. I've heard that. I've told you that. You've heard that from me on many occasions in the last month and a half. Prior to talking to those people, yes, I had a different opinion of how things would go. But in talking to those people, and I have emails, and you all have those emails, where by and large, the high percentage of people say, I don't want a parking lot, I don't want a playground, I don't want bathrooms, I don't want any of that stuff. And so that's what we've said from the, all along, since we've done this. Talk to these people, okay? You're shaking your head, but that comment that I made was before I talked to any of these people. So when I went through and, so all I'm saying is, when I went through and talked, when I went through and talked to everyone, they said.
You know what? He's talking. You had your time, and now it's his turn.
No, no.
No, you cannot ask anything. Your comment, your public portion is done. It's now, it's his time to talk. You can email him or email us. Okay, well, then you can email him, and then he can respond to you. Okay? Thank you.
So anyways, I'm not trying to rile anything up. All I'm trying to say, the point I'm trying to make is that people just want a simple trail. They don't want parking, they don't want anything like that. We understand that now, okay? So, we've said all along that the grant that we applied for for Atlantic Water Conservation Fund is off the table, right? We said that. We said that loud and clear. That's off, okay? My job, your job, the mayor's job, is to give the people what they want. And all indications from everything that we've done have pointed positively. They haven't pointed positively 55 to 45. It's been at minimum 66% that have said they want to see trails in the city. And so that's what my job to do is, to do that. And I'm not trying to discount anyone that doesn't feel that way. I'm just trying to say, this is what we see, and this is what our job is to do. And that's what I'm here to do. And it's blatantly clear to me, to you, and to all of you, that you don't want that stuff. You don't want a parking lot, you don't want a bathroom, you don't want a playground, you don't want pavilions, you don't want benches, you don't want garbage cans. This is not the first time I've said this. I'm sure it won't be the last time I'll say it. I don't know how, I know that it's hard to believe the city or believe Sean, but I don't know how many more times I could say it, and maybe a moratorium is the right way to go. The state of Ohio has followed up and has let us know that our grant would have scored the same score with the reduced amenities taken out. One thing that they said is that those that are against the trail have safety concerns. So they asked me to respond to them on what we will do to make this area safe. And obviously, the installation of three crosswalks, including Kingswood, should help that. I've said this before, it's a rapid flashing beacon, and there's a button to activate it, and that button goes off for 30 to 45 seconds, at which point it stops, so it won't be flashing at all times of the night. But yet, oncoming traffic will see that and understand that there's someone that's crossing the road. The police department, as the mayor mentioned, referenced that there was four accidents in 2021. Speed was not a contributing factor in these accidents, and none involved pedestrians or bicycles. They also surveyed several other Northeast Ohio police departments, and none contacted believe that trails contributed to additional crime or report any specific crime due to And finally, there was no indicators that a trail on Gates Mills Boulevard would cause additional crime. One other point I would make is, there's no trail that we can find that's a train wreck. We've talked to Shaker Heights Rec Department, no issues. Cleveland Heights Rec Department, no issues. The mayor, who by the way was here, Mayor Byrne from Beechwood was here. I think he left because he didn't realize that Mayfield Heights people were all long-winded. So, he had somewhere else to be. But my point I'm trying to make is that none of these places have any issues. Manor doesn't have any issues, which the police department followed up on. Cleveland Heights, they did a number of surveys, and not one of them had problems. And then finally, well, the traffic engineer, Mike Schweickert, said it's uncommon for safety studies to be conducted since it is recognized improvement for both operations and safety by safety experts. That comes from our traffic engineer. You know, we have, obviously, in Mayfield Heights, we have busy roads. Mayfield Road, Lander Road, Ridgeberry. And we don't have, we don't have safety concerns, and we don't have pedestrian issues. We don't have bike issues, we don't have pedestrian issues. I've seen people cross Salmon Mayfield, which someone made a comment about how busy Salmon Mayfield is, in a wheelchair. It happens. And it happens safe. It wouldn't happen if it wasn't safe. So all I'm saying is, is that we hear the, you hear the concerns, I hear the concerns. We're trying to do something to better our community, and we'll do the best we can to make it safe. But I don't know if the safety thing, you can never overstate safety, but we have examples all around us that show us that Mayfield Heights is safe on these busy roads. ADA compliance, the ramps at the crosswalks will be ADA compliant, the trail itself will be ADA compliant. That's all we can do. We're not building a sidewalk, or not building a playground, or, I'm sorry, parking lot. It's out, you know, so we can't comment on that because we're not building that. So, Mrs. Vitkin, who I think may have left, her daughter is wheelchair-bound, and she can ride down the street, cross the crosswalk, up the median, or up the ramp, and onto the trail. And anyone else could do the same, I guess, if they lived on a street. If they really wanted to come to Gates Mills Boulevard to walk the trail, they could park on the side street and do the same thing. Funding. So, the updated budget is approximately $17,000 less than the budget that you approved two years ago unanimously. Obviously, things went up, and we took some things out. We added an additional crosswalk. All told, it comes out to we're saving $17,000 roughly. The city portion, almost exactly like it was last time, will be $280,000. That includes the cost share, the local cash, and the in-kind services. The design and engineering, construction administration, is going to cost the city $36,000. The remainder of that $112,000 is part of the grant. We're receiving almost $500,000 in grant funding. This is 63% that is being paid for with grant funds. On the topic of property values, Mayor Rinker cited a study, which the metro parks were involved with nationally, that states that a well-maintained park and trail system can be measured objectively to show it's healthier, offers higher quality of life, and property values go up. The proximate principle is what he states. And he says, the closer you are to a well-maintained trail or park, the more valuable your property is. And then I have a comment from a local realtor, Jamie Ionetta. She's with Keller Williams, and, you're with me. She said, "One of the most desirable amenities for active adults is to have a community is walking and biking trails, especially those adults relocating here from the southern or western areas of the country, who are used to being on trails more frequently. As a realtor who works with many medical professionals relocating in Cleveland, I have often been asked to focus on areas that provide trails or proximity to recreational areas and parks." And then she pointed out that the website for Aberdeen's HOA in Highland Heights quotes, "Our walking, running, and biking trail from one end of Aberdeen to the other is enjoyed by many. Residents tell us they get more, they get to meet their neighbors while walking their dogs on this trail." There's a bunch more comments she has in here, but I think you guys are all, you've heard enough. I guess I would follow up and say this, for those who aren't certain about this as well, Woodhawk is off the table. I've said that before. We're not addressing Woodhawk. It's done. So anyone that thinks we're going to build a trail on Gates Mills Boulevard, and then we're going to come demolish Woodhawk and do that, we're not. That's done. I've said that, I think, I've said that publicly here. We're not doing that anymore. It's a dead issue. Finally, Christian Lynn is here from AECOM and can answer questions on the proposal. So, thanks for your time.
When it comes out before the vote, we'll go ahead and entertain his comments and questions. At this time, we are taking a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 11 o'clock.
Well, can I get a cup of coffee?
Enough hours.
Yikes.
Oh, oops.
All they timeout.
Good night, let's go home.
No, we need.
It is now eleven o'clock and we will continue tonight's meeting. Resolution number 2022-05, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2022-05, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in granting to Jeffrey Lencore, CISO Inc., on behalf of Piazza Group LLC and Lucarelli Limited Partnership, 6075 Mayfield Road, a variance to increase the maximum number of parking spaces on the restaurant property from twelve to twenty-one. Kioga County Permanent Parcel Number 861-17-001. First reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes, as I have stated, there has been correspondence that the applicant would like to be here to present, and he would like it to be put on first reading. He was stuck coming from Columbus in the weather, and his car is now being towed. He cannot have a representative here.
Just say it's on first reading.
All right, this motion, I have to roll call on it.
It's on.
We'll just put it on first reading.
First reading.
Okay, all right. Resolution 2022-06.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2022-06, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in granting to Jeffrey Lencore, CISO Inc., on behalf of Piazza Group LLC and Lucarelli Limited Partnership, 6075 Mayfield Road, a variance to allow drive-through lanes to be located on more than two sides of the building in conjunction with a new restaurant on the property. Kioga County Permanent Parcel Number And that will be on first reading.
This resolution 2022-06 will be on first reading. 2022-07, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2022-07, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in granting to John Agresta and Deborah Agresta, 6498 Foxborough Drive, Mayfield Village, Ohio, a variance to construct a storage shed on a vacant lot in Mayfield Heights owned by them and located adjacent to their residential property. Kioga County Permanent Parcel Numbers 861-21-021 and 861-21-022. First reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Mano, second by Mr. Balastria. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Balastria.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Sabeta, second by Mr. Balastria. All members should have received the minutes from the BZA explaining the privacy fence in the adjacent vacant lot. I'm going to refer to Mrs. Sabeta for further comments from the BZA meeting.
Thank you. Are the applicants present?
Oh, she went home.
She went home, okay. The applicants live in Mayfield Village. The property backyard butts up to two unbuildable lots located in Mayfield Heights that they own. The street follows this pattern. Considering these lots, their backyard, the shed was on the property when purchased about eight years ago, and the vinyl solid fence is up on the back property line. The board saw the hardship in the use of the land. It was a unanimous recommendation to approve, stating that these lots that are 100 by 70 and 100 by 90, even though they're in Mayfield Heights, they stated that they came very late for a permit, and the vinyl fence had already started going up, but they did stop at the back property before putting up the rest. So it's kind of like a construction zone in their backyard, because it was December 28th and it's been doing nothing but snowing. But the lots are not buildable, and it is a hardship in the use of the property considering it is their backyard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. I see that there was a memo. I didn't see it in my packet. Do you know what that memo said from Mr. DeLuca?
Yes, he wanted on his back property line, his wrought iron fence to butt up against the vinyl fence, but the vinyl fence was already up, and so was his.
I guess I'm not understanding. So the vinyl fence went up by the applicant, and then he's got a fence that he wants to tie into that?
The neighbor on the back property line.
Mr. DeLuca, right? Franken, Frank, Franklin Robert Junior?
Has a fence already up, so he wanted them to fill in the gap.
And he wasn't present at the meeting?
No.
Thank you.
Are there any, Mr. Monaco?
Thank you. Were they ever advised that they probably should consolidate the two lots together?
No, she actually stated that she does pay two deeds and two tax bills.
I think it would be to their advantage to kind of consolidate the two lots together, so there won't be, you know, a problem.
Well, they're unbuildable lots, and the whole street carries that way, all the way down Foxborough.
Did anybody have any further questions? Is the applicant here, if they have questions for the applicant?
He went home.
Okay. Mr. DeJohn.
Mrs. Fagan, now that they build a shed on that unbuildable lot, is there some tax advantage to the city?
The shed was already there.
Yeah, yeah, the shed was already there.
But they still need, you know, a variance for it.
It's interesting. Thank you.
Are there any, Mr. Monaco?
I believe if the property value has increased because the shed is there, the tax should be a little bit higher.
The shed was there before.
Mr. Mano?
Stated that the shed was already there.
Shed was there when they bought the property, so it was.
Existing. Okay, there's no further questions. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mrs. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Balastria.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Resolution 2022-8 has been passed. Resolution 2022-08, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2022-08, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in granting to John Agresta and Deborah Agresta, 6498 Foxborough Drive, Mayfield Village, Ohio, a variance to construct a privacy fence on a vacant lot in Mayfield Heights owned by them and located adjacent to their residential property. Kioga County Permanent Parcel Numbers 861-21-021 and 861-21-022. First reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Monaco, second by Mr. Balastria. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Balastria.
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Mano, second by Mrs. Tressi. This was a five to zero vote in favor of the variance request, and Mrs. Sabeta, would you like to add anything from that meeting?
It is the same, you know, putting a fence, a privacy fence, on an unbuildable lot. It is an ordinance that we have. It's not permitted, but these two parcels are attached to the Mayfield Village parcel. It is, you know, a hardship in the use of the land. It's their backyard.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mrs. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastria.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes, this resolution has been adopted. Moving to Resolution 2022-09.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2022-09, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with AECOM, 1300 East 9th Street, Cleveland, Ohio, 44114, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the design and construction of the Gates Mills Boulevard Connector Trail and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mrs. Sabeta, second by Mr. Monaco. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastria.
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Sabeta. Second by Mr. Balastria. Is there any discussion or comments from council? Mr. Balastria.
I know it's late, but if you would indulge me, I'd like to read a statement based on, you know, what we've heard, what I've done, and what I've researched. I would like to thank the residents, both pro and con, for their concerns relative to the trail project. I've heard, spoken to, emailed, and texted many of you. First, let me say that my job as an elected official, and I would say all of our jobs, is to weigh in the facts, be fiscally responsible, and vote on issues that are in the best interest of the community as a whole. I listened to the voices of the residents of Woodhawk. The overwhelming majority did not want a trail to go down their streets for various reasons. In good conscience, I represented them and voted to nix that component of the project. Similarly, when Costco historically wanted to come to Mayfield Heights, I fought for the neighbors of those neighboring communities who did not want it in their backyard. I felt it was the right thing to do. However, the majority of the other residents of Mayfield Heights who were not directly affected wanted Costco to come into Mayfield Heights. As a result, the city lost millions in a suit, and Costco went in without incident. They have been a good neighbor without the myriad of issues and problems it supposedly was going to cause. Speculations and opinions spoken out of anger and fear usually do not carry much weight in an argument. I have learned over the years to do what is right based on factual information, doing my homework, and trusting those who are in the know. I would like to touch on a few topics with regards to the trail project that seems to be reoccurring issues, and some of them have already been touched upon, so I'll just skim over them. Number one, safety with regards to crime. You've heard the mayor speak, you've heard Mr. Ward speak, you've heard the report from the police chief, and I would believe that the Mayfield Heights Police Department feels there are no indicators that on the trail on Gates Mills Boulevard will introduce any additional crime. Number two, a traffic study should be taken. A traffic engineer for the city stated it is uncommon for traffic and safety studies to be reformed when installing trails or sidewalks. We don't do it for sidewalks. A traffic study is unnecessary. This is a fact, and it would be fiscally irresponsible. The people don't want it. Number three, on Gates Mills, from my tabulations, 54% want it, 30% do not, with a small percentage undecided. This is a fact. Of the 80-plus residents who spoke, emailed, texted, and called me, not counting tonight, as best as I can ascertain by trying not to count duplicate stances, by a margin of three to one, the residents were in favor of the city moving forward with the project. These are the facts as I received them. ADA compliance, you heard from the mayor, every crosswalk and pedestrian ramp will be ADA compliant as it is with every sidewalk in the city. A trail will be treated no differently than a public sidewalk. One Gates Mills Boulevard octogenarian, who you've heard his email tonight, who walks in the street with a walker, is looking forward to the trail. Number five, safety with regards to crosswalks. Crosswalks will be placed at the side intersections with crossing mechanisms to give drivers an awareness and an opportunity for pedestrians to cross safely. Currently, there are no crosswalks to the median, although some people still use them. A path to nowhere, number six, this seems to be the buzzword. For the sake of argument, let's call the trail a glorified sidewalk. I live on a dead-end street that enters and exits on Somme Center. I am not a walker. I could stand up and show you, nor do I own a dog, and my children are full grown. However, the majority of the homeowners on my street walk daily, and they walk in inclement weather, and walk all the way down to Somme, turn around, and walk home. You can say that about a lot of our streets in the city, and we know, Kingswood, Marshfield, Longridge, Catalano, you can go on. There are streets that don't exit to nowhere but a single thoroughfare. It's refreshing to get to know your neighbors and get to know the people that live around you, so even if you think it doesn't connect to anything, that's not a bad thing. To those that say, well, Pepper Pike or Gates Mills may not connect, the question I ask is, why does Mayfield Heights have to be a follower? Why can't we be the innovator and take the lead? Let's be proactive with our changing community. I am older, and I admit I find change hard, but a city that does not change will waste away and die. The ODNR application, number seven, I have listed, changes were submitted to the ODNR for the Clean Ohio Trail Fund Grant. You heard Mr. Ward say the program manager stated the ODNR does not believe any of the proposed changes would have changed our score to that project received in the 2020 funding cycle. There were other topics that were debated. I just want to briefly shed some light on some of them. This grant two years ago was overwhelmingly approved by this council, embracing the trails project in every aspect. I am for the beautification of our city and keeping the city moving forward with improving the health, well-being, safety, beauty, and fun for all. This is the right thing to do at the right time for all residents of our city. My support has not changed. I will vote yes, and I encourage my council peers to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Monaco?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for taking my advice. I questioned $150,000 for the city engineer fees, and he was able to get that reduced to $112,500. So thank you for that. So I was doing some comparison between the quotes from AECOM and GPD, and as I'm reading down, I think you should have this in your packet, you can follow around with me. Just give me a minute to get it. So on AECOM fees, we have $16,500 for survey and project, $16,000 for the schematic, $38,000 for the construction document and cost estimating. There is $7,500 for permitting. I don't know what is that for, what kind of permit we need for that, and there is some building support, it's $4,500, which I'm not sure what that is for. The total comes to $82,500. What troubles me that what they omitted from this proposal is the stormwater management plan that GPD had, and it was priced at $14,500, and the landscaping plan, there was $12,500, which is not included in the AECOM project. That's number one. Also, I did some comparison between the cost estimate, the breakdown that we received, and it also should be in your packet. What I noticed here is that the design construction is $111,054, but then below that, there is another engineering design fee, which is $82,500, and there is another fee, there's construction administration fee, which is $30,000. So the total fees for the engineering fees, according to my calculation here, is $223,824. So I tried to make some comparison between the GPD price versus AECOM, and this is directly from their sheet, from the one that we got previously and the one that we got this weekend. And if you look at item number one, general condition, AECOM is $48,470, GPD is $31,930. The topsoil stripping is $36,000, GPD is $30,000. Top item number four, topsoil cotton fill, AECOM is $18,000, GPD is $12,000. And by the way, on both projects, the hauling is not included, so if you have to haul this topsoil away, it's going to cost the city additional funds. The high-visibility pedestrian crosswalk, AECOM price is $44,800, GPD $35,000. So the total construction cost of this project is $550,270. The engineering costs are total $223,824, so the total cost of this project is $778,094. The GPD cost was considerably lower than that. So out of this amount, the city will pay $115,971 for cash, $15,960 in in-kind support work, whatever the city is going to provide. And then there is some funds that the city received from Northeast Ohio Seward District that totals to $149,292. So if you take all this in consideration, the total city contribution to this is $281,223. Again, I am a runner. I am not against a trailer going on, going into the middle of Gates Mills Boulevard. I'd be the first one to use it. However, this thing is divided in four little spaces. The space that is closer to Cedar Road, it's no more than 100 yards. The other three are considerably small. To use this trail, you have to cross the cut through between two streets in the three different locations. Another question that I have, are we doing a retention base in here, and how are we going to do this? Is we going to install one for each one of those? So we're going to have four of them, and then if we have to connect them all one to the next to the next, that means that we have to rip out the road that we just installed and we just paid for. So given all this, again, I'm all for running, but I don't like those numbers, and my vote... is going to be no for that reason. I spoke to Mr. Hammond today from the ODNR, and I learned the following. The Pepper Pike applied for the grant a while ago. They should know the result of their application within 30 to 60 days. Mayfield Heights can wait 60 days without losing the grant. So we can wait for the result of the Pepper Pike application, see if they get it or not. If we lose the grant, we would have a better chance, contrary to what we've been told all along, to get it later because we have not received it now. So I think that we should revisit this and work with Pepper Pike to get a better price. If we can work together with the city of Pepper Pike and get it all done at the same time, from Brenner to Som Center Road, this way we can figure out where the trail ends and where our will begin, and we can share all the cost with the neighboring community. Thank you.
Mr. Lynn, is he still here? Could you just say where you're from and the address and name for everyone?
Christian Lynn, AECOM, project manager, 1300 East 9th Street, Suite 500, Cleveland, Ohio 44114. So just to clarify, so our proposal for design, engineering, and construction services is $112,500. I think, I want to make sure I understood correctly, one of the items you had mentioned there, there's a 20% contingency that is included in the fee right now, not our fee, the construction fee, because we have not yet engineered the trail, and that is customary for a project at this stage, to have a 20% contingency. That includes things that we expect to eventually be engineered into the project, but they just not have been detailed yet. The stormwater management plan is included in our proposal, that is part of the permitting process. We have to have that approved. There's also an OEPA, National Pollution Permit, that we have to get as part of the project, so that is the $7,500. So those are things that are part of every project where we're disturbing over an acre that we'll have to account for. So we'll both be managing the stormwater from the trail project, but in addition, we are looking to manage or improve some of the wet conditions on the site and put in buyer-retention areas that the sewer district will support through the cost-share program. And some of the details of that are, you know, we need to figure out, but the intent is that there are buyer-retention areas in each segment of the trail, and those would tie back in to the sewer running along the Boulevard. So I'm not sure if that, anything else?
May I?
Mr. Monaco.
Thank you. So I'm looking at your fees, and I understand design and construction contingency is $111,054. That's probably the $112,000 that we voted on tonight, or pretty close to that.
No. That is, in a project at the conceptual stage, which is what I would say this is, we'd still have to get a survey and, you know, do detailed line and profile drawings for the trail. You know, ODOT projects, which, this is not an ODOT project, but it's similar to one, and then it's a linear project, you would carry a 20% contingency until you go through the design process. As you move through the design process, that contingency amount will be lowered, and most likely those dollars, you know, maybe some of them aren't needed, but most likely those dollars are anticipated to be put into the project as part of the design for details that, you know, are not yet included, like if we need a culvert pipe under the trail, or, you know, the actual tactile warning strips, things like that that just aren't quite developed yet.
May I ask you, am I correct in stating that your design and construction is $111,054? Your design, engineering, and permitting fees is $82,500, and your construction administration fee is $30,000? Am I correct in stating this?
There's one, no.
It's right here, sir. Black and white, right at the bottom here. Those are the signs that I made you check mark.
It's a design and construction contingency.
What does that mean?
So that's part of the cost-estimating process, where we have not yet designed and engineered the project, and it's best practice to include a 20% contingency because there are details of the project that we have not yet defined. We've not engaged in the project yet.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. What is this design, engineering, and permitting, the $82,500?
That is AECOM's fee to do the work, to design the trail.
What is your total cost?
$112,500.
So why the other two fees are on here, or three fees are on here?
So one is the contingency fee, that's not our fee, nothing to do with us.
Which fees are those?
Those are, that's your money to build the project. It's basically, it's just, you could have, we could have put a line item in the construction to say unknown design elements, or it's a best practice that, you know, we would be misleading you to tell you every little piece of the project that you're going to need right now. But as a way of accounting for that, that 20%, you know, is intended to capture those items that are not yet defined.
I totally understand the 20%. I'm with you. What baffles me is, you know, again, you say design and construction contingency, which is 20%. I understand that. Below that, you say design, engineering, and permitting, and there's another $82,500.
Correct.
And then, again, there's a construction administration is $30,000. If you look at your proposal, they should all be included in $112,000.
It is.
It is. That's what we're voting on this evening. Mr. Monaco.
So $82,000 and the $30,000 are the two fees that come to $112,000.
He also has $111,054.
So it's...
That's only if we need it. Only if we need something extra. That's not our money.
So $111,054 is only if it's needed?
Right.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't want to come back later. You mean that, we expect that to be part of the project at some point, the construction part of the project.
So it's money that you're going to be paid for? So you're going to be paid...
No, that's not it. Is that what he's saying?
Not us. A contractor.
Let me take a shot at it. Okay, this resolution is authorizing AECOM to design the trail and to administrate, provide engineering services during the construction of the trail. The total amount is $112,500. Once the design is performed, council will review that and determine whether or not it wants to go forward with the project. And if it does, then the project will be bid, and a contractor will submit a bid, hopefully around, you've got a guesstimate in there, right?
Yeah, better than a guesstimate, but...
Okay, I shouldn't say guesstimate, but the contractor will submit a bid for, say, $100,000. And then council will review that and see whether or not it wants to award the construction contract to the low bidder or one of the bidders. But that's not part of AECOM's services. Their services are to design and to provide engineering services during the construction. They're not going to build it. So their lump-sum fee is $112,500 to design it and to provide engineering during the construction. And that's all this resolution does.
I understand that, but I'm also worried about the $111,054, which, after the design is done and approved, then we move at the second phase, and there is this $111,054 that the city would have to pay again for design and construction?
No. That's the estimate of construction, right?
No. So throughout the design process, we're going to do, our design will build up detail at every stage, and, you know, we'll be submitting that to the city. And as we develop that detail, as our engineers engineer the project, our cost estimate will become more refined and detailed. As that happens, those $111,000 are going to become part of the detailed estimate. So we anticipate those dollars, the bulk of them, will be part of the construction of your project, not the design of it. The only way you would, you know, we would have more than $112,500 is if you ask us to do something beyond what is in the scope right now. So, I don't know if that answers it or not.
And if that were to happen, you would have to come back to council again, and we would have to vote on that issue.
Yeah.
Right. And am I mistaken to say that there might not, there may be more money for different grants along the way to help with this project? Once the design is done?
I'd say it's possible, but I, you know, can't cite a specific one because it's all about timing, grants, because there's a specific cycle, and, you know, we have a cycle for this grant. And so the whole, as you know, the process to apply for an award or to grant takes time, and so a lot of things would have to align, and...
Mr. DeJohn.
So I don't know who can answer this, probably Mr. Ward. Mr. Ward, could we have asked for 75% grant money? And if not, why didn't we do that?
So yes, we could have asked for 75%. It is a 75% grant, and so when we say 75%, that's the percentage that, that's what it is. But it's also good to have more skin in the game, and this is a very competitive grant throughout the state of Ohio, and so they award you more points if you have more skin in the game. And so we came in, and we said we're going to do, originally it was 62.5%, now it's 63, a little over 63%, but that was enough to get us the right score to win this grant.
I would just add that the maximum award amount for the grant is $500,000 at the time of the application, so we're pretty much, which is, I will say, commend you on that because not often do you get everything you ask for, so.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
No.
Oh, Mrs., did you want, Mrs. Tressi, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, let's call for the vote.
Not midnight yet.
Well, I actually do have a comment. Can I make the comment, or you called for the vote, so?
The president.
You can comment.
Call for the vote.
Once you call for the vote, I thought you couldn't comment.
You can't.
No such thing.
Wow, okay. Go ahead, make your comment.
Well, you don't want to have to hear what I say. That's okay. I don't really, I mean, I think...
Go ahead. Mr. Murphy's in charge.
So I have two things I want to bring up. First, I want to say that, again, what we're doing, what's in front of us is a proposal for the design for the AECOM to draw up the plans for Gates Mills, the design and engineering tonight. We have all heard from many residents in favor as well as opposed. Everyone has brought many great points to the table, and we all appreciate your efforts and your sincere dedication to the project that is before us this evening. I have personally seen neighbors against each other as they speak their opinions, as well as residents pitted against council. I hope that whatever decision is made this evening, that you all walk away with no animosity towards each other or towards this council. For the betterment of the community, we all need to work together, live and stick in this community, no matter what the vote is. In addition to hearing our residents, we have heard from mayors from other communities, water conservation, I'm sorry, conservation, I'm tired, experts, TMS Traffic Engineer, our Mayfield Heights Police Department, ODNR, and various other professionals that pertain to the construction of this type of project. We as a council, excluding Mr. Monaco, all voted unanimously three times in favor to move forward with the whole connectivity project. That's what I'd like to say first. Second, I would like to say that many people that have come to us through emails, that have come and spoke publicly, have all requested over the years that I've sat on council to have sidewalks put in down Gates Mills Boulevard. I spoke to Mr. DeJohn about this. I spoke to Mr. Gerson a few weeks ago. He came up with kind of a quote of how much it would cost to put those sidewalks down the Gates Mills Boulevard. We have sidewalks throughout the entire community. So the residents over there deserve a sidewalk as well. But you've talked about safety, you've talked about people being close to your homes, all kinds of issues. In my opinion, having sidewalks closer to your homes would be more dangerous on that road. So some of the issues that have come to play, I don't know if these people still want the sidewalks, but there's a lot of cost involved in putting sidewalks over there. There's an assessment that all the residents would incur over there, but this is something I've heard for as long as I've been on council. So now we're finding another solution for what I've been dealing with for years, not being able to give the people the sidewalks that they've wanted. This trail would put people further away from your home, safer away from the street. And I don't know if people thought about that. But you know what? I have a sidewalk in the front of my yard, and I have many people that come walk through my yard, my neighborhood. They park their cars in our neighborhood, they walk back there because we live close to where they can continue their walk, and I don't complain because it's a public, it's a public area. We're a community. So it's kind of shameful to hear people say that they don't want people in front of their homes, and they don't want people walking in front of their houses, and they're afraid of crime, and they're afraid for these people. Because you know what? We are supposed to be one community, and if we didn't have the streets, we'd be walking everywhere. So that's all I have to say. I will call for the vote. Roll call and the motion to approve.
Mr. Mano.
No.
Mr. Boustria.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
No.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi.
No.
Mr. Monaco.
No.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Resolution 2022-09 has been denied. Ordinance number 2022-02, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordinance number 2022-02, an ordinance revising ordinance number 2021-36 for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Mayfield Heights, State of Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, by including the open purchase orders as of December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rolls?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Boustria, second by Mr. DeJohn. Roll call and the motion to suspend.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mr. Boustria.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Tressi, second by Mr. Boustria. Discussion, this is a revision to include any open purchase orders as of December 31, 2021. These PLs were included in Exhibit A of your ordinance. Mrs. Fagan, is there anything else you would like to add?
I think that pretty much summarizes it. Normally, this is something when we did the budget after the beginning of the year, it would just be there and included. Obviously, since we're passing it before the end of the year, to be more efficient, we don't know what that number will be, so we're adding them in now.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any questions for Mrs. Fagan? All right, roll call on the motion to approve.
Mrs. Tressi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Boustria.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes. Ordinance number 2022-02 has been approved. There are no motions this evening. Is there any new business or comments from council? Mr. DeJohn.
Couple of things, I'll be quick. First of all, Mr. Gerson has... First of all, Mr. Gerson has asked for a public works meeting to discuss updated PCRs for the Mayfield Heights streets, recommendations for the 2022 road program, and recommendations for the 2022 sidewalk program. Also, I did send an email to Mrs. Fagan asking her about the income tax credit for those working at home in 2021, asking her if it will affect our revenues, and she couldn't really tell me it all depends. But it all depends on how many are working at home. But I want to caution this council, our budget for this pool has already been estimated at $22 million, and it'll probably go higher. So if our taxes go down, our revenue for our taxes go down, somebody's going to be holding that bill in their hand. So I just want to caution this council about that. I mean, I want to pool, I like the project, but I'm very, very worried about the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council? All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Sabeta, second by, no one wants to leave? Mrs. Tressi. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? All right, thank you. It is now 11:45, and we adjourned.